All right, good evening at seven o'clock. I'll call the February 2nd meeting of the Oxford Board of Selectmen. Order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, which is general law, chapter 30A, section 18. And the governor's March 15, 2020 order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford are being conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. And at this moment, I'd like to take attendance, so I'll start with Selectman Megan Triano.
Present.
Selectman Cheryl Satt, LeBlanc. Sorry.
Well, I'd love to be part of that family, however.
We got enough.
Cheryl LeBlanc is present.
Selectman Mike Daniels.
Present.
And Selectman John Sad.
Present.
And I am Dennis Lamash, and I am here. And we also have our town manager in Callahan. All right, the first item on our agenda is the approval of the December 22 minutes. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, comments? Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll abstain. That's four and yeses, one abstention, those minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is the appointment of the someone to serve on the Smolinski Milet trust fund. Okay, I know I used to serve on that, and then Cheryl was on it last year. So what would the board like to do? Do I have a motion for somebody to serve on it?
If interested, I would make a motion for Cheryl to continue on it.
Second the motion.
We, is that okay Cheryl?
Yeah, it's fine, I'm happy to do it.
Okay, then with that, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, that's five in the affirmative. Cheryl, you will serve on that again, Cheryl, very good.
It's an honor, thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda is Conservation Commission appointment. Under section 1A, the Conservation Commission of seven members shall be appointed by the town manager, subject to the approval of the selectmen in accordance with the provisions of the general laws for three years overlapping terms. So we have three people that need reappointment. Those would be Paul Cunningham, Bob Manuel, and Ed Stusko to the Conservation Commission. I entertain a motion to reappoint them.
Make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, comments? Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, five in the affirmative, they're appointed, and we thank them again, their service. Very good. Next item on our agenda is a CD decision-making appointment authority related relative to civil service lateral transfer of Roy Aquilesca. And this is continued from our last meeting. So I would presume that we've all had plenty of time to do due diligence on this matter. So at this point, I entertain a motion to give the police chief the authority to act on this particular individual. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
All right, I have a motion to give the police chief the authority to act on this individual? And a second, any comments?
Yes, please, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
I did, obviously, we know what my unpopular opinion was last time. But I did just want to follow up. Obviously, you all have had, in the packets, the correspondence that went back and forth between legal counsel and myself. I've done a lot of back research on this as well, looking at past decisions that the board has made. I do think a decision like this is going to be precedent-setting as far as giving our authority to make such decisions while the board is still considered to be the appointing authority for the police department. I did have a long conversation with Chief Sad about this as well. I am 110% confident in his ability to run his department and to handle any personnel issues that he is having. Having, however, my issue here is surrounded by civil service and the fact that all civil service transfers that I was able to see in the past have gone through the board per the recommendation of the chief. The chief, to my best research, has not requested the authority to make the decision on his own before, but has simply petitioned the board with his opinion. Of the last transfers that I've been able to find, a transfer has never been denied. In fact, a few months ago, we as a board, upon the recommendation of the chief, rehired an officer who had voluntarily quit for the sole purpose of allowing that officer to make a lateral transfer to a different department. In the same token, I completely understand that the chief has the department's best interest at heart, wholeheartedly, completely understand that he's looking out for what he feels is best for the department. However, I also can't look past the fact that we did have an officer reach out to the board for assistance on the matter because we are the appointing authority. So at this point, based on all the research that I've done, offering no disrespect to the chief at all, I think that we should consider what we're doing in giving him the authority here to make the decision when past precedent of this board has been to handle the matters and continue from there. So I know we're not making the decision on the transfer tonight, but the giving up of the power, and while I completely do have faith in the chief, I'm going to stick with past precedent in my continuing with this matter.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I just have a question for.
Sure, go ahead, Mike, yep.
If we didn't move forward with ceding the decision to the police chief, typically we take the recommendation of the police chief, which in this matter would be denying the request for the transfer. Is it appropriate for me to ask you, is that the decision that you would make to deny the transfer going with the police chief?
I don't think that's the matter that we are discussing right now. I think that would have to be an agenda item to discuss that further.
Okay, fair enough.
Yep, the only issue on is that in this particular instance, we're allowing our police chief to act as the appointing authority just this one time. So that was the motion, that was what the second was about. So if you approve this, this means that the police chief will handle this matter. Okay, Mike?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Right then, with that, I'll call for a vote.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, that's three in the affirmative, two not, a no's. So we have given the police chief the authority to act on this particular matter. Thank you, that brings us to town manager's report. Town manager.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's back is being good to them after the shoveling today. I want to open up our manager's report with a surplus request. Chief Laurent McDonald is requesting the board to actually vote to declare our outdated self-contained breathing apparatus a surplus. Both, it's a recommendation you can see in your packet from him, as well as a recommendation from the vendor for this outdated equipment. There's only one vendor that actually even services it, and they have been saying as well, there's no value in it. And of course, we were very fortunate with the AFG grant, the Assistance for Firefighters grant, to actually replace the self-contained breathing apparatus that we're asking you to surplus for this evening because it's no longer serviceable and has no market value.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this material as surplus, as asked by the chief.
Make that motion.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, comments? Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, five in the affirmative, that equipment is surplus. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a gate nation. Anthony Sad, our police chief, also resident, has informed the manager's office of his desire to donate a very heavy-duty commercial gate to the town. The gate is about 36 feet in length, and it has a 12-foot stationary section. Our DPW operations manager, Steve Esposito, also believes this to be of value to the department and recommends that the board accept the donation. In looking at what the estimated value of the commercial gate could be, anywhere between $1,500 and $1,800, so in accordance with MGL's chapter 44, sections 53 and 53 and a half, I'm requesting the board vote to approve the acceptance of the donation.
I entertain a motion to approve the acceptance of this donation.
Make that motion.
A second.
We got a motion and a second, comments? Call for a vote.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, five in the affirmative, we thank Mr. Sad very much for that donation.
The next item on the agenda is voting machines. We've had a previous capital appropriation quite some time ago, even prior to when I came here, that called for the replacement of our aging electronic voting equipment. Several vendors had provided demonstrations with our previous clerk. When I first came several years ago, we had an actual voting demonstration. There's only a few providers that are recommended by the Secretary of State's office. A previous town clerk had selected Imagecast Precinct Optical or ICP tabulator to replace our existing AccuVote optical scanner for future elections. It was decided not to move forward with the replacement during the past presidential election year, however, it's now being requested from the county clerk's office to proceed and formally notify the Secretary of State's office of the replacement to have the equipment in place for this year. It's kind of ironic because in your, I sent additional information from Michelle Jenkins today that looked at the quote that we were given at the time that we had done the demonstration, and it was a few thousand dollars more than the quote that we received more recently. But this is a good year because we have really virtually not the crazy election year that we had this past year. And this is a formality, anytime the town or any town wants to make a change to the actual election legislation, they're required to send a letter to the Secretary of State's office, and that's per MGL, chapter 54, section 34. So I would make the recommendation that the board vote to send the letter to the Secretary of State's office so we can move forward with actually changing up and removing our aging infrastructure. They really should be adjusted in time as the equipment gets quite old, so that's the information that I've been able to place there. And I know Michelle Jenkins is just coming on, I thought we would be a little bit later, but we're moving like lightning tonight. So if you have any questions, I'm sure she can answer them.
I would entertain a motion to approve this request to send a letter to the Secretary of State.
Make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, comments? Questions? Not seeing any, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 No vote yes, five in the affirmative, we will do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much as well. Next item on the agenda is the Social Center name change. The board's in receipt under section four of a request that has been forwarded to my office from the Council on Aging Assistant Director Laura Wilson, who at a recent meeting of the Council on Aging in November, had voted to change the name back from Social Center to Senior Center. And so since the building is under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen, they would ask for the blessing of the Board of Selectmen in a vote to approve the name change back to Oxford Senior Center.
And then ten a motion to approve the name change back to the Senior Center.
Make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, comments?
I just had a quick question. I thought, I thought we changed it to the Social Center to make it more encompassing and open for more grants and stuff like that. Was that not the case?
Thank you, a good question. So of course, I try to help support whatever decisions are being made or requested of us from departments, and the previous director for the Senior Center had said that the Council on Aging really wanted this. I was not under any assumption to have to challenge that in any way, but from what I understand, that a lot of the Council on Aging members felt that they weren't that comfortable with it, really liked the name Senior Center. So the fact, the fact of being open for more grants, I think it's, I think you're always eligible to be able to apply to any variety of grants, and I think it's the strength of the application. And certainly, we can speak to the fact that the Senior Center itself is multi-generational and office programming that isn't just for seniors, but has a main focus on that. So I don't think it hurts us, Selectman Daniels, it's a good question, but I'm of the opinion, I want to make them be happy and comfortable with the name that they want to have. And, you know, they still have the Young at Heart Social Cafe over there, so, you know, that's not necessarily going to change, but as far as the Senior Center, they find themselves always referring to it, and I think the Council on Aging just wanted to change it back.
All right, any other comments? Then I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 I'll vote yes, that's five in the affirmative, we now have a Senior Center.
You always did, right? So the next item is a bandstand in the common, a use request. My office was in receipt of a request from Oxford resident Melissa Gregonis to use the Oxford bandstand on the town common for an outdoor wedding. The date requested is Saturday, March 27. Ms. Gregonis would be following any and all COVID guidelines recommended or required by either the Director of Public Health or the Board of Health, including limitations on attendance. And I just recommend that the board vote to approve this conditional on getting the formal approval from the Director of Public Health and/or the Board of Health after providing more details other than just saying that they'll comply. But I think that it's been a tough year for anybody trying to organize a wedding or any kind of event in which they would typically not have to think about the pandemic, and hopefully by the time March comes around, maybe some of those requirements may be lifted or maybe some may be more stringent. But if we put them in the loop with the Board of Health and the Director of Public Health, I think then we should feel comfortable in knowing that whatever their decision will be as it gets closer to the date, they'll be able to make that approval. But the board here is also part of that step process in making or a recommendation to approve the request.
I entertain a motion to approve the request to use the bandstand for this wedding.
Make that motion.
You have a motion and a second, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, five in affirmative, they are approved.
The next item is Shared Winter Grants, Shared Streets Winter Grant. It used to be just Shared Streets, but now because we're in the wintertime, they've changed it to Shared Winter Streets Grant. I wanted to bring the board up to speed. As you know, we've recently had a pedestrian fatality on Main Street, and the prior DPW director and I had been already pursuing a Shared Street Grant prior to this that was not funded at that time. This is prior to the more recent fatality that took place on Main Street. That pursuit of wanting to enhance the safety of a very, very wide Main thoroughfare through our downtown was also precipitated on the fact that we had a member of the community get in touch with my office in the previous year, I want to say back in the spring, in which they had actually been injured while crossing Main Street. And thankfully, they were not injured irrevocably with harm, but it brought to light the fact that we do have a tremendous wide Main right-of-way. And because of that, I felt with Jared Duval coming on board, that we would reapply, particularly in light of what has recently happened. So on January 29th, we did request funding assistance from the Mass DOT for this particular grant. I've included a letter of support that you can see that accompanied our grant. We applied for $299,338 because we really want to have these essential public safety enhancements, particularly for our pedestrians in the transit areas downtown. So this will be our second application. I want you to know that it has taken on increased urgency. I also made a personal phone call to the Director of Mass DOT, Barry Lorian, to let him know we were actually applying again, and also to impress upon him the urgency. This particular grant program will actually look to provide enhancements known as RFBs so that pedestrians can actually call signalization up when they're going to cross. It also creates some ADA and Mass Architecture Board curb compliant ramps, improved pedestrian signals with APS push buttons, and a number of other things that relate to trying to create better transit safety. Director Lorian did talk with me today, and he did say that they are committed, particularly in the area where this pedestrian fatality took place, to make those improvements. As you know, we partner with the state along the Main Street corridor, and so that was very relief for me to hear that. But we also have other areas on Main Street that also represent increased pedestrian hazards, and so we will be going forward with this particular grant, but the DOT has already signaled that they will try very, in a timely way, to at least make improvements down in that area, along with, they've already been investigating it for increased lighting as well in that corridor. So I guess the good news is that we are definitely now on the Mass Department of Transportation's radar for this area, particularly where the accident took place, but more importantly, they're also going to advocate to this specific grant program that we've applied to be able to add additional assistance, so we may be able to have their support on at least two fronts, and I'm hoping that that will happen. The Shared Streets Grant Program initially came out with, I want to say about $5 million. It was initiative from the Executive Office, and at first, they were looking more towards supporting downtown expansion for municipal parking and, you know, COVID-related pedestrian improvements. And so our first grant, you know, focused on the fact that we have this wide, you know, Main Street, and it's very dangerous for people to try to cross, and we're here asking people to, you know, patronize our businesses more and to give them the support they need, but we felt that that was important. And so now we, you know, have unfortunately been put in the light to really enhance why it is so important. So I will keep the board informed with whatever occurs with the Department of Transportation, particularly in that one area, and then if we also get the nod from this grant program for this cycle, I will definitely let the board know of that as well. The next item is Local Rapid Recovery Technical Assistance Grant. As you know, I came before this board, along with our new Director of Planning and Economic Development, and explained that we were going to be applying for several grants, and one of them was the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative's Local Rapid Recovery Planning Program. I'm really pleased to say that we're one of only 61 communities in the state that actually is going to be receiving this technical assistance grant, which we've applied for, and we were just notified on Friday or Saturday, I can't remember, but no, over the weekend because I called our director to let him know that his efforts were successful. And this will allow us to develop an online presence to work with local businesses, whether it's about curbside pickup, marketing and promotion, and even maybe facade improvements, but these experts will come out. This would be, you know, something we would have had to include in our budget. These are not inexpensive things, they're worth tens of thousands of dollars. So we're looking forward to being able to use their expertise to help us with our downtown recovery efforts and also expansion efforts for our small businesses. The next item is very exciting, it's the Curaleaf Fuel Assistance Program that we're launching. I wanted to inform the board that my office was approached by Curaleaf to consider piloting a fuel assistance endeavor for Oxford residents. As of today, we only have fuel assistance that goes through the SMARC program, but we don't have any fuel assistance program that we actually control or preside over it. So the Council on Aging Director Laura Wilson, I've directed her to work with Curaleaf because they wanted to develop a program where they could help Oxford residents who may not be being benefited by the SMARC program. Dispensary manager Kristin IAC has worked with Laura to develop the actual parameters of the program, and to be eligible for consideration, you're going to need to be at least an Oxford resident, 21 years of age or older, not currently on fuel assistance, and write the reasons why you're requesting assistance and submit the utility bill history. What we are going to do is provide the mouthpiece for this program. We are going to communicate it through the chatter newsletter as well as online, and residents can go online to complete an application that we helped put together and contact the Senior Center, and then we will actually forward those to Curaleaf, and they will help our Oxford residents. So it's as easy as that, so I encourage anyone to go online or to contact our Senior Center if they're having trouble. And after this snowfall, I can imagine people going through their fuel and their electricity costs as being much higher than they would have been at the start of the month. The next item is the Oxford update for COVID. I wanted to make everyone aware that our cases do continue to climb for COVID, and we have been informed that we have just almost reached the 900 mark from the beginning of the actual start of the pandemic. I put in your packets on Friday that there was 842 cases. Well, yesterday were 864 cases and 128 active cases. Additionally, there have been 14 COVID deaths, up from 13. We want to continue to impress upon everyone that we are making real strong recommendations for our board to continue to communicate on all levels, the Board of Health, Board of Selectmen, that we're not through this yet, and we need people to really continue to do all of the right things to keep these numbers from not going up but to going in the reverse. And I have to strongly applaud the two public health nurses, Kathy Schumer and Amy Grenet, they are on the phone constantly, and if you've ever done real public health tracing, knowing that you have to keep track of 128 cases on any given day with new ones coming in, and the amount of telephone outreach and in-person outreach that might be. necessary in terms of helping people with enforcement matters, they've really done an incredible job. Which leads me to my next item. I wanted to introduce our new director of public health and for her to help us actually provide an update on vaccination, which I know has been very much something that everyone is concerned about. I wanted to introduce Allison Novak and we call her Ally because she likes to be called Ally. As you can see, she's probably waving to you right there. Ally is somebody who comes with a very tremendous background in public health. And, you know, this has been a management priority since I came here, both the director for planning and for public health services. This is before we even had the pandemic and we had put some money aside. And this year again, we added money so that we could actually attract somebody with the credentials. Allison is somebody who has terrific credentials. She has a master's in public health. She attended Boston University and also the University of Connecticut. And she has worked for a number of towns as an actual public health professional. She has worked for more than 10 years for the Cambridge Public Health Department, where she presided over a number of programs, including 27 different health department initiatives that comprised of that community. She also has been somebody who has worked for the Watertown Health Department and has worked in a regional sense for the Bristol County Emergency Preparedness Coalition. And she has two young children, three and five years old and who are delightful. And she has come to us with a mission and a mission to help us guide, be guided through not just the pandemic, but to be the person who becomes a coordinator for a multitude of areas that unfortunately I think for us has been a little bit too fragmented at times. So Ally, I know that you've just come on board with us like January 16th, I think. But I think that the board would love to hear from you about vaccination efforts. And for that, I know you came to us with having a lot of flu vaccination preparedness under your belt. But if you can try to talk us through what you've been doing, I think that would be very helpful to the board.
Sure. And thank you for that wonderful introduction and for having me at your meeting tonight. So as Jen was saying, I've been working a lot on trying to figure out how to get residents of Oxford vaccinated. As you know, that's, everybody's looking for the vaccine right now. So it's been quite the undertaking for the last couple of weeks, my first two weeks on the job. What I have just done is we got up on the town website, a registration form that will meet the different phase levels and also the priority groups for getting the vaccine. So if residents go onto our website, they can find that on basically any of the pages there. And the questionnaire is a little bit extensive, but it's necessary right now given that we are in a situation where there's a bunch of different phases and a bunch of moving pieces right now. Additionally, I have been in contact with a couple of different clinics. The main one that I've had discussions with is right over the line in Webster. And we are going to be partnering with them. And I think even as early as next week, we'll be receiving from, through the Department of Public Health, an allotment of vaccines through them. They're going to order some vaccines to specifically target our community. So I'm thinking that they will get those vaccines in for to us, well, to them. And then we will work to get people over to that clinic. I've already spoken with the senior center and we're going to figure out a way to bus some of the seniors over that might not be able to drive, which is actually going to work well because there's a 15-minute waiting period now with this vaccine. So, you know, we can really utilize that to kind of come back and forth between the senior center and then the clinic if need be, because I know there's certain COVID regulations now that we have to adhere to getting people in the vans. So we may not be able to get many people over at one time. So we're looking at rolling out several different clinics over a period of time. So the first will hopefully be next either Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or possibly during the weekend. As soon as I get that information, I will make it available to the people who registered. And then as time progresses and the phase levels move and, you know, open up more, I'm hoping to maybe in April, I know that sounds like a faraway time, but that's when we're looking at phase, it's going to be open up to everybody. So I'm hoping to bring the vaccines to Oxford and hopefully plan a larger scale clinic with more vaccines, maybe for a longer period of time, maybe like over the weekend, and see if we can't vaccinate more people at that point as well. So the stuff that's happening next week is just the first of many, hopefully, clinics that will be able to offer to the residents of Oxford.
Very good. Thank you, Ally. Welcome. I'm sure we could ask you zillions of questions, but let's see if we can minimize that a little bit. Board members, do you have comments or questions for Ally?
Yes.
Yes, John?
Yeah. Welcome aboard. And this is very good news. I know I've had a number of residents contact me and emphasize the frustration that they are having trying to get a vaccine. And these are people who are eligible, namely seniors who are eligible as of February 1st, that is 75 and over. I don't know how many people have contacted me and said that they have difficulty getting appointments. They have contacted the Webster facility on Cudworth Road and that's the one I'm assuming that you're partnering up with. And they can't get through or they get online and there's nothing available. I've also been told, and through my own experience, trying to get onto a facility like Gillette Stadium, that is booked. Harrington Hospital, which is the next closest in Southridge, they are booked all the way through the end of March and they're not taking any appointments at this point. So it's very frustrating for seniors, especially those that have underlying conditions. So this is a very welcome, welcomed endeavor. And believe me, I'll be one of the first ones to fill out one of those forms. Thank you very much for your, your looking into this because I think that's a foot in the right direction. And I think you're going to please a lot of people in this community once that ball gets rolling. Thank you for your service.
Thank you as well. And I totally understand and appreciate the concern and the angst that everybody's experiencing, especially the elderly around the vaccine and getting it. We've also been trying to figure out a way to manage some of the elderly who cannot use a computer to sign up. So we've been keeping, you know, a list of those people as well. And we will be trying to make phone calls to them to let them know when to sign up. In addition to the people who can use the computer and can get it electronically. So I totally appreciate the fact that there has been tons of angst around the vaccine. One thing I just wanted to mention is that only 2% of pharmacies right now are offering vaccines and that's for the country, that's not for our state. So I think what we'll also end up seeing is as the CVSs of the world and the Walgreens of the world get vaccines in to be able to give to people, I'm hoping in, there will be like in combination of all the stuff that's being offered, some people will start beginning to find more spaces and more appointments available. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed, double-crossed, my toes too, that, you know, it won't be as much as an issue as time goes on.
Thank you, Ally. I think the big question with the vaccine is, is the quantity, being able to get them to the locations. That's what seems to be the, the big drawback. Once they got them, they seem to be able to distribute them okay. Am I correct in understanding that?
Yes, there's an, they're, they seem to be able to, you know, do the execution of giving the vaccine okay. It's, there's been some storage issues, not necessarily in Massachusetts, but I know there's been several national news stories about, you know, vaccines that have been exposed to heat too long. It's, it's about opening up all these people who want to have, to be a site and getting the people the vaccines that can deliver them to the community. Right now, not many health departments have vaccine available to them. So we're just, you know, stringing along right with everybody else, right along with everybody else, waiting to figure out, you know, when we can get vaccine and what we can do. There's only a certain amount of sites open right now, like I mentioned. I think those sites, we're going to get more and more sites as, you know, as they come open. We're going to see more and more spots available. But it was a similar issue with the COVID testing around Christmas. You know, people couldn't find a place to get COVID tests either. So we just need to get kind of through this logger jam at the beginning and hope that as things open up and as we partner up with more people and try to bring, you know, bring the vaccine more directly and, you know, pigeonhole those spots and hold those spots for Oxford residents that will be able to vaccinate more and more people.
Very good. Again, thank you for your effort. We appreciate it. Nice to meet you. I'm sure we'll be seeing a lot of you. I don't see any other board members for comments. So again, thanks for joining us tonight and we'll continue with the managers.
Great. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Be in touch with you tomorrow.
Thanks. Have a great night.
You too. The next item is just to update the board. As you know, I had shared with you that we had been in receipt of a letter to begin collective bargaining negotiations with the police union. And I wanted you to know that as of today, the Oxford Police Association, the manager, the, our HR specialist and the chief have met with representatives for Oxford Police Association on two occasions, on January 12th and January 27th. Not only to go over ground rules, but to actually present information and discuss contract areas of interest for both sides. They, these discussions have been very highly productive. They've lasted quite a few hours. And I feel very confident that we'll be able to move forward in being able to come to mutual agreement on a number of areas within our next session. And I will definitely update the board as we go forward on how those sessions continue to be. The next item is just to let you know that the House One Governor's Budget was released on January 27th. This is the fiscal year 2022 budget for the state, which is looking at it being in a total of $46 billion. The budget is based on a revenue consensus tax estimate of about $30.12 billion, which estimates about 30.5% in growth collections over the fiscal '21 revised tax estimates. I want you to be aware of this because the governor's budget also relies heavily on the state's rainy day fund. As you know, we dated quite a while before the legislature finalized the budget late this fall. During that time, they balanced the budget with, using stabilization funds to the tune of about $1.35 billion. And this new budget that's being released, of course, we have many more steps to go through before we actually have a state budget, but the finalized, but the state stabilization fund is drawn down by another $1.6 billion. That's leaving about $1.1 billion in the rainy day fund for the state. All this does is just make us aware that we're still not out of this pandemic and that state receipts, along with local receipts, are being affected. And that's why they're balancing the budget from the state level using that rainy day fund. So it's quite amazing to see how quickly the savings can go down in order to try to keep things stable. The good things are, is that the unrestricted government aid is actually showing an uptick of 34 million, I think it was. And also Chapter 70 aid is going to be, you know, held in a, I think, a good position for us. That's the governor's budget. Of course, a lot can be changing between now and when the House deals with their budget. But I wanted to alert you so that we can move forward even with our local budgets, knowing that we may have some revenue consensus figures that we can, can build our budget on. The next item is just to let you know that we did have quite the winter storm, as you can see outside your windows. I want you to know that the DPW has done a stellar job. Prior to even the storm coming, we had actually set up the EOC in a preventive way in case we had really high winds and wet snow. We were fortunate to not have received the wet snow, but to have received a lot of dry snow. And our operations manager, who you know, had, had had surgery this past fall, has been doing a phenomenal job keeping everybody's moving in the right direction and keeping our DPW work as, as safe as possible from COVID. I do want to say that the roads look magnificent today and they deserve an awful lot of credit for being out there all evening and into this morning. And the next item is just to let the, the board know that the Arrows of Light Oxford PAC 147, Den 4, had been in touch with my office. And on Thursday, January 14th, I had the pleasure of meeting with Cub Scouts via Zoom, which was very fun and entertaining. As part of their Build a Better World adventure requirement, the scouts are asked to meet with a community leader or government leader to learn about the role that's important to their community and also the issues that face the community. And all those scouts are going to be crossing over into, the Cub Scouts crossing over into Boy Scouts in March. They're a delightful group. I want to say thank you to Ava Yager for coordinating it. And I got a really nice thank you letter from, card from them. And it's just, you know, with everything that we deal with in a given week, especially with everything from COVID and storms, it's, it's nice to have these little bright moments like this that pop up and really make you smile and give you a real sense of pause for the day. And they did that. So I want to thank the Arrows of Light for helping do that. And the final item was not on my actual report, but I'm adding it in. I hope Tim can bring it up. I was notified today, as of this afternoon, that we've had two firefighters who I had appointed. You have Jeff Morris, who a little bit, about a month or so ago, had actually received his shield, an office probationary period. And Sean O'Neil is being handed his official shield from Chief McDonald and that happened today. And as you know, our firefighters go through rigorous training and assessment over a period of time. So welcome to the Oxford Firefighters Brigade, I call it. Oxford 20 is Jeff Morris and, I mean, excuse me, Oxford 20 is Sean O'Neil and Jeff Morris is Oxford 16. And I went down to say thank you for all the work that they're doing in the North Station in particular. And they've added a great deal of, I think, excellent care and also expertise in the field for our fire department and emergency response services. And of course, I was getting ready to go down. They were going to take this picture and boom, they had an emergency caller and they were in the hospital for a couple of hours, but we did that late today. So thank you for their hard work. I just wanted the board to know that was a milestone in a crazy year to have to achieve and they should be congratulated. And that would conclude my manager's report, Mr. Chairman.
Right. Thank you very much, Town Manager. We go to Selectmen's request. We'll start with Selectmen Triana.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the DPW. I feel like I have that on repeat every week. I feel like every week we have this awful weather lately. But once again, they had a lot of snow to contend with with this last storm. And I just want to tip my hat because again, I mean, I woke up this morning to black pavement and considering how much snow is in my yard, that's pretty impressive. So it's all over the forum, how happy people are with our DPW and how good they've done compared to other towns. And again, I tip my hat to them and I say thank you for working tirelessly, tirelessly through the night to keep our roads safe. And then the only other thing that I have, while Mike and Cheryl, you're both here, for the Policy Committee, we have to meet to approve meeting minutes from the last meeting that we had with the three of us. If the two of you could look at your schedules and shoot me some times that work for you guys just so that we can have the meeting and I can have it posted, so that we can have it for the purposes of approving the minutes. I would appreciate that. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Selectmen LeBlanc.
Good evening, everyone. I have nothing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Selectmen Daniels.
Also, I have nothing for this evening.
All right. Thank you. Selectmen Sad. All right. Thank you. Selectman Sad.
Yeah, just kudos to the Highway Department as usual and our emergency personnel that have to work with police and fire, EMS, that have to work during very difficult conditions during a storm. So we appreciate you all. You do a fine job and continue the good work. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yes, that's definitely the theme of tonight. That was on my list. I was out last night also plowing and it's amazing. Like Megan said, the job they do is phenomenal. How they can plow when they can't see, it's amazing. The snow was coming so fast, you can't see the road. And yet, I was up in North Oxford and I had to go down Miriam Road and I didn't know where the road was, you know? And I only had to go a short distance and all I could think of is the guy plowing that road and saying that. So they do an awesome, awesome job. They're phenomenal and kudos to them. And that's all I had also. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
All right. Now call for a vote.
Yes.
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 You know, vote yes. Fine and affirmative. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.